Discussion direction and potential action regarding filing an anticipated city council vacancy for District One. Marissa.
So, Councilman Atkinson had requested a future agenda item to discuss filling his District One City Council seat upon his anticipated resignation. The staff recommendation would be for the council to appoint someone into that position rather than holding a costly special election. We don't have an official resignation from the councilman yet, but he did mention during the last meeting it would be around mid-June. And so this item on the agenda allows council to discuss plans to fill the anticipated vacancy and provide any direction to staff if you so choose. So you may choose to hold a special election, which we don't recommend. You may choose to appoint a community member who meets the requirements for living in District One. And those are really your two options. And should you choose to appoint someone, you can do a number of things. You can consider those who ran for the seat at the last election. You can advertise for a set period of time and consider any memos of interest. You can make nominations. You can ask any interested person to attend a council meeting and publicly state their interest, or any combination of the above.
Just my opinion. I was thinking that we could...I don't want to do a special election. I think that would be dumb, too costly. So I think we should appoint somebody, put it out there for 14, 30 days, whatever you guys want to do, and we can all come to an agreement on who we want to appoint.
Is there any way we can ask the two people, the two others that ran for the position, and see if they would like it first before we move on to the public and see if anybody else would like to go for the position, see if they would like it?
Yes, but we need direction of the council because now two council members have said two different things. So we'll need direction from a majority of the council.
So I'd like to appoint Hilda Crawford. Sorry, Hilda. No, so I think the fairest way, which we've done in the past, is to open it up for everybody. And, you know, because if the council agrees that the persons that were on the last...you know, if they...if those people are in the mix with others, it's not going to make a difference. It's going to take three of us to agree anyways. And I would rather bring everyone in and just do it once, that way we can get it over with, than just bring in two people and then just not agree, and then have to bring in and call more people, and then that just takes a while. And plus, then it kind of singles those two people out. And so I would like to see if we could give a 30-day notice, make it in the paper, put it out there on social media, and then have the people fill out an application, and then bring in the applications, and then council also be able to ask them questions, give them about five or 10 minutes to tell us what their qualifications are and why they would like to do it, and then have council be able to ask them questions, and then entertain motions. That would be my suggestion.
Right. So, I mean, that's the way council's done in the past. The previous two people who ran did not win, so I would say open it up to everybody. That would be my recommendation, and that's how it has been in the past.
So you're wanting to hold it for 30 days and then have a debate?
For those who are interested, yes. So we may get only the two people who ran before as possible interest, or we may get five people who are possibly interested.
I'd like to have the previous two that ran as well, seat...or not seated, but put on the list. They've already met their requirements. They can fill out an additional informational questionnaire or something, part of the application, but I think they should already be included into it. We've already spent the money to put them on the ballot the first time, and to prevent from having to do it again. I think we should at least add them in there.
That would be their prerogative if they chose to.
If they would like to.
Yeah.
And just for clarification, I wouldn't really call it a debate because they're not going to be debating each other. They would just be telling us what their qualifications are, allowing...giving them a time limit, five or 10 minutes, maybe 10 minutes, it's an important position, and then us being able to ask them questions afterwards, and then move on to the next person, and then after they're completely done, and we have all of the people who have wanted to speak, then we would allow time for motions. And, you know, how that system works should probably be discussed as well because sometimes it's whoever makes the first motion, and then sometimes it's, hey, let's put all the motions on the table, and then let's work it that way. And so we may also want to bring that back with options on how that's going to work to make sure that the council agrees on a fair process for that as well.
Right. And there were a lot of qualified candidates who did not run because one of us, the three that were up there, were running, and they did not want to run a campaign against us. So just narrowing it down to this, just those two, I think is unfair to the rest of the district.
Well, and plus, like you say, we're going to...it'll take three people anyways. It'll take three of us to vote, and if we just brought those two forward, I agree with you, though, we should definitely invite those people to apply just like everybody else, make sure that they're sent...I think, on your behalf, let's make sure that we send those that did run, let's send them, you know, letters and say, hey, this has happened, and that way they're...make sure that they're notified, that way that they are included. I agree with you on that.
Okay, so from what I gather, the suggestion is to hold it off for 30 days, which would be roughly the sixth of next month. Is there any way we can have them all come in that actually want to run on May 18th? That way it gives them a little bit of time to prepare.
Yes, if that's the direction of the council.
Is that okay? That gives 30 days plus two weeks.
I think all the people should be talking in a workshop before the council meeting so it's a little more informal than this setting. I think it'll be better. That way we can get more people in here and have it not a meeting per se, but a workshop beforehand, then we can vote on it afterwards.
Do that in like the 30-day period?
It would still just be noticed, but you're talking about maybe like a 5:30 or 5 o'clock, like workshop?
Yeah. The way we did the other stuff like water, have them come in and speak at a workshop before the council meeting, on that 18th, if that's what Jim wants. I think that would make it a little more informal and let people be a little more relaxed to talk.
I'd say a little bit earlier than 5:00, 5:30. I'd say we start at like 4:00, 4:30. That way, if there's quite a few citizens that are here to run for that position, we can at least hear them all out.
So how about we split the difference and go at 5:00 because that's when I get off work? And I think that's when the general population gets off work, and so I don't want like people not being able to show up because they work. So how about if we split the difference and go 5:00?
So if we do 5:00, can we just give them five minutes to speak? Because if you have five people show up and you're giving them 10 minutes, that'll run to 5:50 so there won't be time for questions.
That's fine. I'm fine with that.
We can delay the start of the regular meeting if we need to. I mean, within reason. I mean, so if you need to start at 5:00.
If we do it at 5:00, I'll run here.
Yeah.
Right down the street.
We can start the regular meeting at 6:15 or 6:30 if we really needed to.
You know you can get a ticket for going too slow, too, right? You know that, right? Move on to the next item, announcements.
Future agenda items?
I do. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
All right. On a future agenda item, I want to appoint Roger Schindler to the vacancy in District One council seat. And if he declines, I want to appoint Dawn Kajina to the vacancy in District One due to they ran for that seat, got votes. They had a combined total of 370 votes in that district, so there was a lot of people that voted for them. And the second agenda item I have is when a new person is appointed, they need to be invited to the team building on May 25th.
Just the two items?
Yes.
Counsel, any more future agenda items?
Yeah. So I'd like a future agenda item for city staff to create a poll that can be accessible via Facebook and in person in regards to the road diet on Elm, to find out if people are in favor of this or if people are against it. All I've heard is negative. I still want to find out the opinion of the people to see. Caltrans, this is a Caltrans project. It started as a Kalanga project getting funding, remember? And then Caltrans kind of took over this with funding, and so I never say anything's too late. I know a lot of people have given up hope, and a lot of people are angry. I personally have seen what that light on Cambridge has done. It's doubled or tripled the amount of time it takes to get your kids to school. It's the worst thing ever. We could pull out almost all of these stoplights and we'd be a better community for it. That's my personal opinion, and I think if we polled the residents, they'd...some of them might be in favor of the same type of idea. And so this poll would really just serve as something we can send, you know, to Caltrans and just say, hey, look, you're going to move forward with something that our residents aren't happy with, or they are happy with, and then we won't...and then they'll know, you know? But having these meetings where they say, hey, everyone show up, and then eight people show up, look at how many people we have in the city council tonight. We don't have hardly any people here. So people, that's not the way you reach people. And that's a very draconian way of reaching people, and I just think that they haven't done their due diligence. I think this is the way that it's set to do. I just don't think you get everyone's opinion when you do that, and so I'd like to see that. And then also, I would like a future agenda item that unfortunately would diametrically oppose Mr. Hedgecock's agenda item because I think we already voted to move forward with the selection process, and the people have already put in time and effort to come down here and sign up for those positions in District One. And even though I do respect the fact that people have...did run, I've never in history seen that be the way, that you give just those two people the opportunity. I watched the school district, I've watched the city, I've watched Lemoore, I've watched Fresno, and it always goes out to the public. I don't see that it's ever been what I would call pigeonholed into this scenario where the two people that ran last time get to get the...you know, it would sound like it's fair, but the thing is, there were people that purposely didn't run because Adam was running, so they didn't want to run against him. And so even though I do respect Councilman Hedgecock's opinion, I think we already decided this, so if we're going to have an agenda item, then I would also like to have an agenda item to keep it the way it is. And then I'd like to ask also the city attorney if that's something that we even can backtrack on, because we already set it forward, and we already set a date towards this, and we already have people that have applied. What would the ramifications of that be?
I don't think there would be any ramifications. I think you guys can dictate how you want to control the process based on a majority and how a majority wants to proceed with the process.
Okay. So then I would just like to put my agenda side by side with his.
Did Mr. Schindler or Ms. Kajina apply?
Turn in papers to go through the process?
I believe Mr. Schindler did. I'm not sure on Ms. Kajina.
Okay, so they would still be involved in the same process if you kept it the way you already voted to do it, right? They would have the same opportunity.
I believe there was another person who put in an application as well. What about that person?
I'm just saying that they were...that they're in the...they're already in the pool.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
So, Marissa, can you tell us how many people have applied and put in paperwork?
Sort of. So I've been out this week, and so I can tell you that the last time when I was there, there were two applicants. I don't know if any more have come in since I've been gone.
It's only the two applicants, and both have completed all of the required documentation.
And so no matter what would happen if we couldn't agree, so basically it would just...if we went with one person's agenda item, then those people would get ahead before others to get voted up or down, then the other people that...the one person basically that's left, but we don't know because people sometimes apply at the last second. So we don't know if people are just holding, you know, themselves out to apply until it comes. And let me say, I'm actually looking at all the applicants and trying to look in an unbiased fashion, so I have nothing against any of these folks, and I am convinced we'll come to an agreement. I'd just like to each person to be able to come forward, that way that they can give their piece, we can ask them the questions. And now it kind of makes sense why the agenda item 5.8 was removed from the consent calendar. So 5.8, if I could read it, was to establish a process for city council meeting workshop, which means that this item probably was removed because there was going to be a future agenda item put ahead. And to me, that's interesting.
Yeah, it's kind of goes against what we already agreed we were going to do. So if we agreed that we're going to do something, now we're saying we're not going to do that, and now we're going to go in a totally different direction without council giving their opinion. So if Councilman Hedgecock is going to give an item to appoint...
When you guys got into making that motion with semantics, the first thing that was said was that we need to consider Roger and Dawn first because they ran for office, and Nathan came back and motioned the same thing but a little bit differently. So, you know...
If I could finish, that would be great. So if he's going to make a future agenda item for Roger and Dawn, I'll make a future agenda item for the appointment of the other person who has put in an application.
Yeah, go ahead, Scott. Just briefly, please.
I got an email today from the Caltrans. They actually want to have a booth at Horn Toad Derby to take questions about that improvement on Elm Street, just so you guys know. So it must not be finalized if they're still wanting input, I don't know. But I just got an email from today saying if they could set up a booth down there to get public opinion, so.
Hilda Crawford, I just have a question. When was...I mean, I have my notes at the library, but when was a deadline for submitting your application and when everything was going to be decided as to who wanted to apply to Phil Adams', excuse me, Councilman Atkinson's?
Adam is just fine.
Okay. Position?
Marissa.
I believe it was the 15th.
Shannon may be able to clarify. I think it's May 10th because it was before the agenda has to be published, and so I believe the deadline's May 10th, and then they would be invited to the May 18th special city council meeting at 5:00 PM. And they would be prepared to make like an opening statement, and council would be permitted to ask questions at that time.
Okay, that was May 18th?
May 10th.
May 5:00 PM is the special meeting, but I believe the application deadline is May 10th. Shannon, do you know if that's correct?
That's correct.
Oh, so I still have time. I'm not just joking.
And I have one more question.
Thank you.
Based on the code of conduct that we just passed, it includes a section on reconsidering an item. I'd like to reconsider item 5.8. I see some staring faces. 5.8 is establish a process for special city council meeting workshop on May 18th at 5:00 regarding an anticipated city council district vacancy for District One. I'm asking, we reconsider that item, per the code of conduct that was just passed?
Can you point me to the page?
In the code of conduct?
Correct.
Oh, it's buried in there, but I know it is in there because I put it in there.
The reason why I'm asking is typically it's for to be considered at the, like, the next meeting.
So I put it to be considered specifically at the current meeting.
Okay, let me see. Hold on. Yeah, immediately during the same session, yeah.
So we need to vote on this right now?
Correct.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Can we get roll call?
That's only to re...yes, to reconsider, correct.
Can...do we get discussion on this item again, or is this just a vote?
This is just to reconsider it.
It's just a vote to reconsider, and then we get a...
Then the item will come back.
It would come back.
Come back at our next meeting.
No, it would come back today.
No, today, yes, correct.
All right. My vote's yes. Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
We've already put this out to the public, and the public has already started turning in their paperwork. I think it's completely unfair for those who have turned in their paperwork to say all of a sudden we say, oh, you know what? We're just kidding. We're going to go in this direction now. When we told them we were going to go in this direction. Now, Mr. Schindler has turned in his paperwork, so he will be there at the May 18th workshop, and whoever else turns in their paperwork will be there as well. And if that's the way we told the public we were going to do it, then that's the way we need to do it. Why change it in the middle of the selection process? It's ridiculous. So my vote is yes, let's continue with the May 18th workshop.
Councilman Hedgecock?
No, because of the verbiage that was changed when we passed that the first time.
Mayor Protim Ramirez?
I think when we voted, I think a lot of us didn't understand the way it was. I just think, in fairness, these two individuals went in the heat to go door-to-door, and to me, that's the first interview. And it's...I understand with the other individuals that are putting in paperwork or anything, and I understand that they're here to fill in a seat and be here for their community. But in fairness, in fairness, yes, these individuals put in the work, and it's not work in the winter, in April. It's in the summer. It's in the summer. And in fairness, they did all the paperwork they had to do. They did the work. They did the work, and I just...I think that's in fairness. So, nay.
Mayor Horn?
I vote no.
May I speak, please? I realize I'm speaking just for myself at the moment, but I am deeply disturbed by the fact that you have the discussion, you already discussed all of that, you told the public, this is open for your application. The people who ran before had the opportunity, and one of them did file for this place. And now to say, oh, wait, hey, they knocked on doors. You went back on what you committed to, and I'm just deeply disappointed. I mean, like, what are you going to go back on next? Because it's not fair. I'm disappointed, very, very disappointed.
We understand that.
No, I don't think you do.
Yeah, we do. In reality, in reality, these people had the chance to run when the election was out. If they don't choose to run when there's an election, I'm just...
Okay, so you want to get into statistics? We could get into the analysis of the votes, and who got how many votes, and who ran, and who specifically said they didn't want to run against Adam. So you open the playing field again, and you say, we're going to choose the best candidate. And those same two people have the same opportunity to come up and say, here I am, I ran before, I did the debates, I understand the topics, and put in their word, and show who they are. But you're not giving them that opportunity after you already said you would. You said you would do it. I applied for an art job back in 1982. I could go back now and say, I applied for it before, I can do it now. I'm not the same person. So I'm...it's not what you said, it's not what you committed to, there is no excuse, none, because it wasn't unfair the way you had it. The way you had it said they had every right to apply again. And you on purpose intentionally wiped out what you committed as a team to do, period.
Hilda Crawford, what I don't agree with is the fact that it was already posted, it was put out there. Everybody's had a chance to come in, everybody has a chance to put in their paperwork, we still have it till the 10th. And I know that I've always been told that the city is not...I mean, the library is not like the school district. Well, in this case, that happened at the school district. And the reason behind my husband being re-elected for a city...for this school board was the same situation. They had five people, or six, maybe wrong on maybe five, that chose to come back and try to get the seat that was vacated by Board Member Raymond Zubiri. They all had their chance to speak, and one council member said that they felt that it should have been given to one of the previous board members that also ran for that office. And he, since then, had never been to any of the city council meetings, had never bothered to go to any of our library board meetings, because yes, we are part of the school district, and we count just as much as the city...as the school district does. So you're backtracking, you're not fully being...you're not fully being honest to the community. Just like Schindler, Mr. Schindler, and whoever else put their paperwork in, then you have those two that ran come back and put in their paperwork. Just because they ran doesn't mean, oh, that they should put someone in their place, or that they should take in and come before...that they should be considered first before those people that went in and did their paperwork, those people that put in and came and are wanting to be involved in the city council. I mean, I know I was, I don't know if it was a joke or not, but asked to run for city council. Truthfully, at this point, maybe I should put in my paperwork. We need a woman that needs to be on this board. We need somebody that's not going to backtrack and play favorites. We need somebody that's going to agree and say, okay, we've done it, let's go forward, the paper has been set, the vote was set, the motion was set, because I took...I take minutes when I'm sitting here at this meetings. And that's just somewhat of a disappointment, and you're going back on your word. If you tell your child, okay, yes, we can go to Disneyland, and then you come back around and say, oh, no, you can't go to Disneyland, we decided not to because we can't take your brother, or we can't take somebody that you want to go with you to the city...to the Disneyland. I just...it...right now, I'm just probably mumbling because I'm upset at thinking that you've backtracked and you've not...you're not honoring your word, basically, is what you're doing. You're not honoring what you committed yourself to at the very beginning. At the last meeting, when you voted to put it in, set a date where the deadline was, had the people come in if they were so interested to run for city council and fill that Adams' seat, to come in the paperwork, and now you're saying, well... And now you're saying, well, screw the paperwork, who cares? It doesn't matter anymore. So what you're doing is kind of dishonoring what you committed yourself for and now people aren't gonna be, they're gonna not want to just come and speak or do something because you're gonna say, oh, well, forget it. They're just gonna turn it back around. Just like when we vote for certain, uh, laws and then whoever wants to change them, changes them. So, maybe I'm not making sense, but right now I'm just not happy. I mean, it's just crazy. You already went through it once and backtracking and redoing it because, oh, now you wanna give somebody else a chance. Well, if that person really wanted to, then they would've got their body down over to the city. They would've filled in the paperwork, just like everybody else on the time that the deadline they were committed to. So, huh, sorry, but I'm not, just God, it's like sticking the knife behind your back, sorry.
Mayor, say something real quick?
Yes.
Okay, so I don't wanna cut anybody off. Um, technically, the public should not be getting up speaking right now, based on the Code of Conduct that was adopted. But, um, I wanna point out that I think people are getting upset because there's a misunderstanding of what happened. And so there is a special city council meeting on May eighteenth at five P.M., just as I explained before. So anyone who turns in an application by May tenth, um, for that city council seat will attend the May eighteenth meeting at five P.M. and speak. Uh, that meeting happens before the May eighteenth, six P.M. item, um, when Councilman Hedgecock requested to appoint someone to the council and Councilman Atkinson requested to appoint someone to the council. And so that May eighteenth meeting at five P.M. will still happen. There's still an agenda item that will be a discussion item where council may choose to appoint someone from that May eighteenth, five P.M. meeting. There will also be a discussion item after that to consider appointing Roger Schindler. And if he does not accept, then Dawn Kajina. And there will be a discussion item to consider appointing the other applicant who has applied. So, I think that there's some confusion about what happened. And so, people have the right to be upset, but I just wanted to make sure everybody was on the same page and knew what was happening.
Then what exactly is the point of the future agenda item then?
To specifically appoint that candidate.
That's what we'd be doing on that day anyway. I mean, th, th, I don't believe that was the intent of the agenda item. The agenda, I mean, if you wanna see why people hate government, we just gave them the perfect example of why they hate government. We just saw it, put on full display in front of the people right now.
I just wanna say that I'm very disappointed in this council. I'm very disappointed. The people had expectations of moving forward. There, as it's being told, once again, someone didn't understand what was going on. That's not my fault, nor do I believe that to be the truth. I believe that's being used as an anchor to change their opinions. And this reeks of the Good Old Boy Network. And I think that, uh, everyone watching, because this will be played back, it will. And I hope people are, are content in what they've done. I'm really unhappy with this council.
So, I just wanna clarify, I, when I said there's a misunderstanding, I think there's a misunderstanding by the public of what just transpired, not necessarily a misunderstanding of the council. And so, with that agenda item that was five-point-eight, that was, that failed as a reconsideration, that was to have a structure for that May eighteenth, five P.M. meeting. So initially, Mayor Horn had asked that, to keep that sort of like a formal process, that council members would submit written questions to me by a certain date. Um, each council person could submit five written questions and then from there, I would form a list of questions so that every council member, every council applicant would be asked the same set of questions. That's the only thing that didn't pass for the reconsideration. It wasn't canceling the meeting or changing anything. It was just that there's not gonna be that formal process of council having to submit their written questions to me in advance in order for me to prepare a formal written question page for every candidate.
And, and you're still accepting questions from the public, Chris?
That would be up to you guys at that meeting.
I'm just appalled that people that would, that would say that they didn't understand that was going on and then try and backtrack later. That's ridiculous. Everybody knew what was going on. Everybody knew. We all voted in favor.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and just move on to, uh, closed session. We have none. Uh, with that being said, we are going to adjourn the meeting tonight until May eighteenth. Uh, special meeting at five o'clock and then actual meeting at six o'clock. Thank you.